Good evening. It's 6:30 on Monday, August the 30th, 2021, and I now call the Wenton Woods City School Board of Education meeting to order. In the absence of our board president, Mrs. Ruggles, I, the vice president, will be conducting the board meeting this evening. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We would ask that you at least silence your cellphones so that they're not ringing during the meeting. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mr. McGowan?
Present.
Mr. Birdy?
Present.
Dr. Couballetti? Dr. Johnson?
Present.
Mrs. Ruggles. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is districts honors and recognitions and gifts, but the person that we were going to honor is not in present today, so we're going to skip that 2.01. We're going to move on into what would have been our recess, but there is a need for an executive session, so board, I'll entertain a motion right now to go into executive session.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee and WWTA and OAPSC, OC, contract overviews.
I'll second it.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The board will now exit to a designated room for our executive session, and we will return to this room upon completion of our executive session. So, please, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll? We're ready to go back into our regular board meeting.
Mr. McGowan?
Present.
Mr. Birdy?
Present.
And Dr. Johnson?
Present. I have that at 7:12. Is that what you're putting it now?
Okay.
Back into our board meeting. The next item on the agenda is 5.01, which is public comments, and just because I'm the annual person that I am, I just put everything in alphabetical order. We do have, I see several people without masks. We do have a mask mandate, so if you have one, you can wear. It'd be appreciated. I believe you're going to be speaking from the back. We have, is that where we want them to go to do their speaking?
No, no, they can actually stand here.
We need, they need a microphone.
... that's going to happen. I'm hoping to be able to see what you're saying.
Yeah, that's why we're looking for a mic.
Looking to pick up back there?
I will set up for the microphone back there. I can turn on a microphone in here so it can be heard on the recording, but I can't amplify the room.
Okay. So, Mr. Denny, let's do this. Let's take my mic. This will work. And then we can just bring the podium right here. Take that mic off, bring the podium here. Yes, sir. Thank you.
But just, can you tap on your microphone? I want to make sure. I am not hearing your microphone.
Turn me on every week, sir. Every month, turn me on.
That was a week, I'm sorry.
Testing. Say you what? Does that one reach? We've got this one, sir. Hey, disregard, disregard, disregard. You got this one to work out here.
They got one to work, thank you.
You got it, sir. Okay. Thank you.
All right, are we ready, Tony?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the first person up for public comments is Ms. Patricia Bender.
Hello, my name is Patricia Bender. I'm from Green Hills, and I am here for two things that I'd like to address. One, we had come and discussed the effect of radiation and wireless on our children, and one of the questions that we had brought up to Mr. Smith was the effect of 5G towers going up in the Forest Park area around the schools, and I guess as well as the Green Hills Middle School that'll be coming up. And Monique had brought up some information and had a meeting with you in regards to doing some high hardwiring of the computers so that there is not such excess radiation of the children. She appeared as if there was interest in the grounding of the computers, and for those parents who are here, I'm a professional, a health professional, and we have found for many years, not only in the United States, but in Europe and France and Asia, that there is a very toxic effect to excess radiation, whether it be from your cellphone, or your computers, or your game stations that kids play with. As you can see, these kids are doing right here. So, one of the things we had brought up was the opportunity not to have 5Gs put up all around the schools, but to hardwire the schools so that these children aren't exposed to so much radiation that can cause headaches, depression, digestive issues, insomnia, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, that was one thing that I wanted to address and see if there was any direction gone with that. There is, as Monique told me, opportunities for grant money if money seems to be the issue as to why the grounding of computer systems could not be put into the schools. All right, that was one question. The other question that I have is in regards to the critical race theory. I am 68 years old. I don't know if there's anybody here older than me. Oh, only Helen. But my, growing up in Green Hills, in the Forest Park area, and having a lot of wonderful friends, going through the 70s, listening to The Beatles, going through wars, trying to make peace, I really find that if we take our children back into all of the critical race things we've all worked through, will stifle our children and not allow them to grow together as we all should. And so, one of the things I wanted to address and just ask really is, are you looking to integrate critical race theory into the school system? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bender. Miss, sorry. No assumptions. All right, the next person that we have is Ms. Helen Booker. And I didn't say this at the beginning, but you did have three minutes and you were well within your time limit, so thank you very much for that.
I practiced that.
Okay, good for you. Okay, all right. Mrs. Booker, you have the floor.
Good evening. My name's Helen Booker, and I just have two concerns or two questions or two comments. I don't know what they are. First, I'm from Green Hills. With the new school, there was a lot of tension, concern about the traffic pattern there at the school, entrance, exit, et cetera. Traffic is still somewhat backed up off of Farragut, and I guess some other streets. I don't know if people know how to navigate Green Hills, but that's one issue. And the other issue is pickup and/or drop-off of the children. I know Forest Park, because I was at a meeting on Saturday, Forest Park seemed to have a whole lot of issues, but my question or concern is, my grandsons live in the same house, they ride two separate buses, they get picked up maybe 20 minutes apart, and as I understood it, there were some issues or concerns with bus drivers not having sufficient amount of bus drivers. And so, I guess one of my questions is, is there a reason, or what is the reason, that if you live in the same household, they go to the same school, why they can't ride the bus together or be consolidated? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Booker. Miss, I'm going to stop using the, the address period. Thank you. Okay. The next person we have is Claire Cormier. Did I pronounce it correctly?
I answered Cormier or Cormier.
Cormier, okay, thank you.
I live in Forest Park now. I lived in Green Hills to begin with. I found this community when I first came to Cincinnati and picked it out, even though I didn't live here for a long time, because it's got this really wonderful clean air bubble. And for somebody who's been asthmatic all my life, it's really important to me. I was home, I had a really bad asthma attack and was in and out of the hospital. I was sitting on my couch for, on the first day after school, of school, and my neighbors have two five-year-olds that didn't come home for almost two hours, and they were outside pacing and worried, and they don't speak English, so it was a difficulty, and they were concerned, but also not wanting to draw too much attention to the situation, I think. But it was really upsetting, and later, after they came home with the children, I saw the bus drop, stop and drop off another child, and the whole bus was full of four, or five, six-year-olds coming home two hours late, and the parents hadn't been communicated with. They were all very upset. I can't imagine sending my child off to school for the first day and having them not come back. That's the first thing. And then, I wrote about all this online at Nextdoor.com, and I had people telling me that their children were on an un-air-conditioned bus. I don't know if that's true. It was very hot that day. I was actually thinking about the kids and whether they were someplace safe in the heat. And I don't know whether the buses have been improved since my kids were little and I was younger, but the bus pollution can be unreal, and the traffic that people were having in Green Hills, which is right where I used to live, has to be really hard on anybody with any kind of lung condition, especially a small child, and I know it's very hard to talk about and to explain to people, and it doesn't register a lot of times, even with the person who is sick, why they are sick, and it doesn't register with little kids. They're not going to speak up, and I just think this needs to be on the radar big time. I think it's being overlooked, and I just am concerned for the health and safety of the kids in the neighborhood and the neighborhood itself, and I think it's a very inconvenient problem, and I didn't anticipate it, just like I didn't anticipate getting sick after the pandemic, after I went back to work, and it's really unfortunate and inconvenient, but we need to address it. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Cormier. The next person to take the podium will be Kathy Gray.
Hello, board and community, I'm only here to talk about communications. As she spoke earlier, there was about 185 parents that showed up at my house due to the fact I am an intricate part of the community, and the biggest problem was communication. I had to assure them that yes, the children were on the bus or at the school and safe. That is their only concern. Why did they get the communication late?
The next person we have is Kayla Harp.
Hello. Hi. So, I just have a few things, and I'll just go through it. I did speak to Mr. Smith on Tuesday, so some of these things he already knows I have concerns with, and so transportation's been a big issue. I understand the whole staggered times thing, but I don't think it works, because just like it's been stating, we have multiple children in the same household that are going to school at different times. Parents do have to work, and I don't think it's working for the schools. My mom runs a daycare. She's ran a daycare for 35 years in the district, and it's been the worst year with the district, just like today. The fourth through sixth bus was 20 minutes early. We never received those updated bus passes, so we don't know when to put those kids out. We're told to put the kids out five minutes ahead of time and 20 minutes early, so she had to have, she had to wait, then she had to have somebody that works for her take these children to school, which shouldn't have to happen. The first through third bus is coming home 30 minutes later than the pre-K bus now, which is better. My son was a five-year-old that was three hours late the first day of school. I actually went up to the school, and God love these teachers, they were there trying to make sure every single kid was home, and they shouldn't have to be there till 8 o'clock to make sure these kids are home. So, I think it's definitely coming from the top, the communication issue, all the way down. They're just told to put these kids on a certain bus, and if kids have been put on the wrong bus, kids have not been put on the bus, parents have not been informed. We got the communication email for the first through third bus at, I think, 5:30 or 5:20 today, but they were out of school at 4 o'clock, so there's an issue right there. No updated bus passes. I actually only received one passes, one bus pass actually this year for my two out of three children that ride the buses. This intersection right here is a big concern, so a lot of 7th through 12th graders have to pass that intersection to go into the H section, because Hinckley Drive is considered one-mile radius, which I get. 9th through 12th, I'm okay with, 7th through 8th, there's nobody there to make sure that they're not getting hit by those cars, and I know you guys have seen that a bunch of accidents happen right there, so I don't know why 7th through 12th still can't get buses, because they're not at the age right now where they can cross those streets that they're by themselves. That was one for that. And then, just communication, like, I've watched this, these board meetings, and I told Mr. Smith this, every month this summer. I only had one kid in the district last year, so I didn't feel like I was entitled to come to these meetings, but there's no parent presence here. Why are we not communicating on our social platforms that you guys are going to have a meeting? We have English second language in Forest Park a lot. They rely on their children to relay messages to them. Children are not going to say, Mom, there's a board meeting. Do you remember that there's a board meeting? So, we need to do that. Communication, late buses, early buses, that communication is being sent out super late. I did speak to Mr. Smith. There's also an issue with the city of Forest Park. We need to get a bunch of our residents in the city of Forest Park while we have a smoke shop across the street from here. I don't know how that got approved. That's another issue that I'm trying to deal with, because I do have children here. In, I guess I'm done. But, we are going to come back next month, so I am trying to bring enough people here.
Yes, we appreciate that. We appreciate that. Thank you so much.
And, Dr. Johnson, I tell him you see I said hi.
We'll do that. Do that. The next person that we have is Nicole Jones. Three minutes goes by so fast. It really does.
Hello, everyone. Just to kind of piggyback off of what she said about the miscommunication about the bus numbers, the kids themselves are not being told that the bus numbers are being supplemented from their original bus number. We get communications as parents that, you know, bus 35 is running late, but I don't care about bus 35. I care about 17, which is the original bus that I'm waiting for. So, that's one thing. With the one call, you know, I would like to trust the school system to get my kids to and from school timely, but you can't tell me that if I don't have adequate information, it's not going to work. My kid's a third grader. I will block in a bus, I will stop a bus. It's not going to happen until I can trust the bus system. So, we definitely need to do better with that. And again, also what Ms. Harp said, we definitely need to make more public information available about these meetings, because I hear about the levy left and right when it's time to pass the levy. I would like to hear more about the board meetings and other stuff to get community involvement, because you better believe it's, it's parents that will show up, but we don't necessarily know about it or remember it, because it's not in our face like the levies. So, that's one thing. And then, one more thing I like to gripe about, well, not gripe, but I don't like calling the school and being told, oh, well, that's another part of the building. I don't care. If I call Wenton Woods Elementary School and I'm calling for someone, I don't care if this secretary for this building answered, get me to where I need to go, because what's happening is that when you call from one call now, for some reason, when you call the number back that just called your number, it's not going back to that, hey, your last message was from this entity. It's going back directly to the school. So, I don't know who called, I don't know what message they left or anything, but I was told by someone, oh, well, they're probably in another part of the building. I don't care. All I care about is that this is the number that I called. That's it. Thank you, and I'm a taxpayer.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Jones. All right, we don't address individual, we'll collectively come back together and talk to you, or meet as a board to discuss these issues that have been brought in front of us. We do thank you, and we appreciate your comments. As for the transportation and the communication, the lack thereof, that is, we're in the process of doing a fact-finding to determine where the breakdown in the communication occurred. I was just as shocked, because I was receiving text messages that morning, and my husband couldn't get off our street either to get to work. He had to go back through and whatever, so.
My timer's on.
My timer's on. That's good. Let's go home for the night. But, I do, I do understand. I do want to also say that, that, you know, this, this board works together. Our meetings are announced, they're on the website. All of the meetings that we have, our work sessions are open, and our board meetings are open, and we usually don't meet in this room. It's a little bigger. We wanted to offer more space, because we wanted everybody to be able to have some place to sit, but there's always an announcement in, it's, it's a standing announcement, that if you go to the front page of our board page for the website, there's a little section for the Board of Education, and there is a list of all of our meetings that we have. So, and they are all open meetings, except for when we have to exit to executive session.
And your board meeting the same day?
Yes, every, every month. It's usually the, the fourth Monday of the month, and it's, it's on that schedule like that. We have our work session the second Monday of the month, and the fourth Monday of the month, we usually have our regular board meeting like this with the camera, okay? And usually, you have opportunity to have comments at this meeting. At our work session, you don't have comments, because we're working. We're trying to resolve issues like this and other things that we're dealing with, so.
Where do we hear, like, when, do you have comments, or when do you address those comments? Next board meeting, you'll go over last board meeting's comments, or?
Well, yeah, we basically will discuss them in the, in the work session, and then whatever resolution, Mr. Smith will address.
Can give it, tell us how we're trying to resolve it. It's not just, it just goes away.
Right, I want to see how it's communicated back to us.
Right, absolutely.
Because we want to make sure that we give you the facts and not just give you just what seems convenient.
Right, right.
So, the facts are what you need.
Right.
So, that's what we do.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, like, this is kind of out of order, but go ahead.
For the, for, I mean, like, a board meeting, and I'm just kind of looking around, and again, there's a lot of Hispanic.
Yeah.
Latin, or well.
We have 36 languages, if I'm not mistaken, in the district.
Oh, okay. So, and I'm just wondering, do you have people who can translate? Because I was at the school when they had the, when the kids first came, and they kind of thought I worked there, but there were some of the, they did, but I helped them as much as I could.
Yes, they, we do have interpreters.
But they wanted, I was just wondering if there was somebody that could be present to translate if some of those individuals came to the meeting.
Yes, we do have that.
Okay.
So, one last thing I want to say before we move on, and we do need to move on, because we have a lot of things on our agenda tonight, is that there are board liaison positions for each one of our districts that we, areas that we serve, Springfield Township, Forest Park, and Green Hills, and one of the board members are assigned to that, to be that liaison position, and so, if, I don't know, if somebody says that they, they're working with the board, then you need to make sure, ask them who, which one, because if you say that you're working with the board, that means you've either come to a board meeting, you sat down one-on-one with someone, and there are liaison positions, and each one of us hold one of those positions, and we have one person that's a backup in case I wouldn't make it, somebody else could come like that. And I believe it's impossible, it's possible to build good relationships and to grow in knowledge by connecting with the stakeholders and the members of the community, so the board is open to meet with the councils, you know, but it just has to, it's a two-way street, you know? It can't be one-sided. So, I just wanted to make that comment. If you could pass these down to Mr. Seymour. The next item on our agenda is 6.01, which is the Wenton Woods Teachers Association, and I do not think we have a representative here, but she did send a message. Trina Baker is the president of the association, so I'm going to ask Mrs. Wilson to read her comments, please.
Okay. Good evening. One of the co-presidents for WWTA sent this message. She addressed it to Mrs. Ruggles, and she says, "I would like to be, uh-oh, be there in person to deliver this message, but due to a prior commitment, I am sending this message. WWTA would like to thank all of the board, thank the board for working so hard with the teachers to complete our new bargaining agreement before school started. We are very excited about the beginning of the school year and are ready to get to work. We are hoping to see the board members and the parents at all of our upcoming open houses. We can't wait to talk about all of the great things our kids are doing. As always, it's a great day to be a lawyer." Trina Baker, and she's a first-grade teacher at Primary North.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. The next item on the agenda is, well, is 6.02, which is the Ohio Association for Public School Employees, OC, and we have a representative.
Good evening, Madam Vice President, board members, administrative staff, parents, and family members. OC also would like to thank the board for approving our contract, and we would like to say to the parents, please bring your patience. We are here to support you and our students. We are in the business to love our students. We just ask that you bring a little patience. We are doing everything in our power to love our kids and make this school year productive. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 7.01, the approval of minutes as presented. Board, unless you see any necessary changes, I will entertain a motion at this time.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been motioned and seconded. As a point of order, I have read the minutes from the meeting, but I was out on 7:25 for the special meeting and 8:09, so if I abstain, I'm asking my treasurer.
They will not pass.
They will not pass. Okay, so, I will go, I've read the minutes. I agree that my colleagues, if you all feel like that there are, it's been motioned for first and seconded, so if there's any other discussion, I just wanted to make that as a point of order to say, so.
Okay. Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. Okay, the vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, which is the treasurer's report for the financial statements for July 2021. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Right, for the month of July, our year-to-date revenues were $12.5 million. Most of that was real estate tax advances from Hamilton County Auditor, approximately $10 million. Our expenditures for the same month were approximately $3.6 million, and the district issued approximately $6.4 million in contracts for the 21, 22 school year. We had approximately $46 million in all funds, $26 million in the general fund, and $10 million still remains in our classroom facilities fund. That's basically a summary of the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. With no objections being heard, we'll let the financial statements for the month of July 2021 be submitted for audit. The next item on the agenda is 9.01, which is the treasurer's recommendation for the investments for July 2021.
Right, for the investments, we had approximately $28 million invested. Unfortunately, the rates are very low right now, ranging from .08% to .2%. The general fund yield, $10,400, and our building funds only yield $1,072 for the month of July.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
And Dr. Johnson?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh one, which is the reports of the superintendent or the school reports. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, the board, to the convenience of the people that are here, the rest of the, we didn't know how many people were going to come. So the rest of the board meeting will actually be conducted in here, this room, so that there will be people facing, giving you their report. So chairs have already been turned for your convenience, so we can move, transition to the other room. Don't leave. Mr. D, can you watch your chairs?
Now, we're staying here, right? Oh, yes, thank you. That's, that's so great. Right, okay. Okay, so they would hear us. Is he going to move that podium back?
Okay. Can everybody hear me okay? Front row, can you hear me okay? You sure? All right. Okay, so I'm not sure if you're aware, but because of COVID, the state of Ohio has exempted every school, meaning that the report card is not going to be an actual report card for this year and next year. So they're giving us the opportunity to make sure that we work with our kids diligently, that we bring people up to speed, that we run rigorous summer school programs. So the grade of A, B, C, D, F is not going to be calculated through the entire state. So at this point, there's no report card to give you information about because they've suspended that. The one thing that I do want to tell you, the teachers are still focused on third grade guarantee, working with kids diligently, making sure that everything is addressed like it should be. We knew that the state was not going to have a report card this year. Every superintendent knew. But I want to make sure that you understand that there's going to be a summer school report, letting you know how kids did in summer session. Some districts didn't have a summer school at all because the state says they're not going to look at the report card. We have one anyway because we want to make sure that we bring our children up to speed. So the next report that you will hear is the summer school report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Tamara Ragland, and I'm Executive Director of Teaching and Learning for Grade Seven through Twelve. And I'll be, be reporting the summer school report this evening. So our administrators for summer school were Ms. Kelly J. Rozell, who is the Dean of Students at formerly the Intermediate School, but now at the South Campus. We have Mr. Adib Dixon, who is now the principal at the middle school at the North Campus. And we had Assistant Principal at the High School, Ms. Kim Harrison Fowler, here at the North Campus. So our total enrollment for summer for K to six was two hundred and thirty-two students, which is a record number. I've been involved in summer school for the last five years. We have never had that many students. For seven and eight, we had seventy-eight students. And for grades nine through twelve, we had a hundred and fifty-five students. All three of these grade bands had record numbers of students this year. For our summer program in K to six, we had ESL offered for grades two through six, which is our English as a Second Language. We had a number of thirty-seven students. Grade two, we had forty-three students. And grade three, we had twenty-three students. And all three of those had all of those students complete. In grades four, we had seventeen students with sixteen who completed. In grade five, we had nineteen students with eighteen completed. In grade six, we had twenty-nine students with twenty-eight completed. Our secondary programs, we offered Algebra I as a repeat credit course. For grades nine through eleven, we had a total of fifty-five students. Seventy-eight percent earned their credit. We had High School Credit Recovery, which is a multitude of courses offered for grades ten through twelve, a number of eighty-eight students in which eighty-two percent earned their credit. We had Middle School Course Recovery for grades seven, a total of thirty-six students. Eighty-eight percent recovered those courses. And our grade eight middle school students, we had twelve of them complete and passed at a rate of eighty-three percent. Additionally, our middle school had enrichment this year, which was new. We had not had enrichment offered prior to this summer. And so we had a total of thirty students from grades seven and eight who participated. There was no completion in terms of a grade, but it was optional and a way to give kids some fun, you know, in addition to the learning that they had academically. We served nineteen hundred and thirty total meals for grades K to six. So our students were able to receive both breakfast and lunch while they were here. And then for seven through twelve, we served seven hundred and sixteen breakfasts and lunches for a total of two thousand six hundred and forty-six meals served during our summer program. So we finally reached the recommendations. So for K to six, our K to six team is recommending that we have tech prep prior to the start of the program, making sure equipment is ready, functional, and so on day one, we're ready to go. We want to monitor food distribution to make sure that there's adequate portions for all students. And then we, we have enlarged here, further expanded enrichment opportunities. This was very popular. We offered a number of opportunities for our students. They were able to engage in sports and cheerleading, to name a few. And our students really, really enjoyed that opportunity. And those were even led by some of our principals who volunteered their time to do so. In grade seven and eight, we want to continue hours of operation. So we expanded our time this summer to include eight AM to one PM for staff and then eight-thirty AM to twelve-thirty PM for students. We expanded everything by an hour. We want to further develop needed enrichment classes and gather student input around that. And then we want more information and promotion for programs to begin earlier, so more students and parents will be aware and choose to participate. At the nine through twelve level, we want to make sure that we advertise enrichment programming earlier and often, perhaps during fourth quarter. So this information did go out, but at the high school level, students are much more interested in recovering credits. And then we want to continue with our extended learning opportunities for students, meaning that a student doesn't have to come to summer school just because they failed. We want to academically enrich and expand our students' horizons in a number of ways. And they can come here and do other things to learn in art, music, as well as academics that don't involve just credit recovery. So we want to expand that for high school, just like we did K to six in middle school. Yes?
Hello, my name is Savan Gibson-Singh here. And I, I do have a few questions. Will this presentation be made public to the community? And I'm asking because I think it would be beneficial for the community and the school because as a parent and taxpayer, it, just hearing the information now, I feel a lot better about spending money on schools. You know, just knowing our children have access to these things. And once again, as a parent, how many more parents may volunteer time as well to assist in these efforts? Also, we, you brought up the credit recovery. Have you guys considered credit advancement? College courses over summer for the kids that are looking to go to college? With Ohio being a dual education state, can kids come and take college courses over summer?
So we have not typically offered what we're calling CCP, College Credit Plus, courses during the summer, during summer school. It's something that we could look into, but we do offer them during the school year on our campus. So the offering is there and the opportunity is there, but it has not been there during the summer months. As a matter of fact, we offer several of them taught by our own teachers here at the high school.
If there are not any other questions, we could go on to ten point oh four, which is the Open Enrollment Update.
So currently, there are approximately four hundred and fifty-five students open enrolled. However, some of these students are actually students. The reason we use open enrollment is one of our, our, our programs is because some students move away. And we have a unique program, project-based learning. I really don't want to lose a kid to another district. So if we have the opportunity to keep them here and keep them open enrolled, we really try our best to do it. The unfortunate part of it is they don't receive transportation because we can't afford to take the kids all the way from the city and bring them here. The other part that I wanted to let you know about is we've incorporated a new plan. I think one of the parents mentioned, how do you deal with the situation where you have two kids coming to school at the same time, but they come in, their school starts at different times, okay? We worked that out, and both of those children, if a child comes at eight-thirty, but their sibling is coming, they don't report until nine, parents want them together, correct? So we'll actually take both of those students and the ones who goes into their sessions at eight-thirty, we'll offer some other incentive and some enrichment programs until the nine o'clock starts. We'll do the same thing on the way home. So the student that gets out at three-thirty, they will, we want them to wait with the sibling that gets out at four. We will take care and accommodate the student that gets out at four, so the kids are going home at the same time.
Quick question with that. As, as she stated, with the busing now, you want your children to go home at the same time on busing. Is that going to, I know, I know it's been communicated through the principals.
Yes.
Because I did get that for third and fourth, but what about if they want, like, we want our children to be, I don't have this issue yet, but bus, on the same bus. Is that something that can be worked out? Because a lot of times you have the older siblings that need to be there for the younger siblings to get on and off the bus.
We're going to work those out individually because
Okay.
if, when we try to incorporate all of it, it very well may be too many kids.
Yeah.
So we're going to try to do it slowly to make sure that the first group will be the walkers and students that get dropped off by parents. One of the things that we found out through some of the confusion on Fairgut and the other things, parents were waiting in the car, dropping off the eight-thirty kid and waiting for the nine o'clock kid. They're like, "I'm not leaving until you get my other kid in here." So we figured out, wait a minute, we can do better. We can do better. We can be better customers for you. And so we figured out that it's going to be to our advantage to take both of the students at the same time. The one thing that we asked you guys to do, if there is going to be a child that sleeps over at your house, who's not your kid, who now gets transported the next day by you, we may not be able to accommodate that kid, but you have to tell us. Otherwise, we have a kid that we don't know what to do with because he's not on our list to get the extended day or early day, okay? The other one, if you say, Superintendent, we need to make a change, one of our children will not be there today, let us know, because we'll be trying to hold that other kid, waiting to make sure that they pair up at the end of the day. And then the final piece, when we talk about some of the transportation issues with this extended day, parents have changed residence and did not let us know. They have moved in other places. And I do understand the parents talking about the mile radius, and some kids are saying, well, that's a bit too far. And so parents have said, "I've moved, but I really want to keep that same opportunity." So we were trying to drop kids off at houses that were not theirs. That was not their house. The kid was saying, "I don't live there anymore." And we're like, "Whoa, what's, what do we do with you?"
Kids were telling us.
And so the kids were giving us the information, but we didn't even make a big fuss. We worked with the parents and we said, "Hey, if there's a change of address, let us know so we can know how to accommodate you." All right. Okay, board questions, comments, suggestions?
No, you said four hundred and fifty-five students are open enrolled right now? That's K through twelve?
Yes.
Okay.
And some of these students, keep in mind, they were here as original Forest Park, Green Hills, and Springfield Township students. Their parents have moved away, but they still want that opportunity. At the beginning, the only students that we would never trade out or never transition to another district were our seniors. So when the student said, "Hey, listen, I've been here since kindergarten. I'm a senior now. My parents have moved away. Can I still attend Wynton Woods?" The one thing that we cannot do, again, we cannot provide transportation. It's out of our, our school.
Yes, okay, you can move to the next item, Mr. Smith. That one's yours as well, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, the IDEA Part D, for the budget presentation.
Yes, ma'am. We're required by law to let you know how we are accommodating students with disabilities, how we fund it, and what kind of staffing works with making sure we get all the accommodations they need. So the Director of Student Services, Tanya Bray, is going to give us the overview.
Good evening. Hi, yes, I'm Tanya Bray, Director of Student Services for Wynton Woods City Schools. And so I will begin my presentation regarding the IDEA for students with disabilities. And so part of the discussion tonight will be talking about the special, special education report card or profile, and then also the current fiscal year, twenty-twenty-two budget for this current school year, and then public participation and comments afterwards. So about one in five people have a learning disability. So one million children, school-aged, six to twenty-one, have some form of a learning disability and receive special education services in school. So IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, is the federal special education law that requires public schools to serve the learning needs of students with disabilities. IDEA requires that schools provide special education services to eligible students per a student's IEP, and that's the Individualized Education Program. So the special education report card and profile, this is an annual rating for every public school district in Ohio. Mr. Smith mentioned that overall, the school districts in Ohio do not have a report card due to the pandemic. But we are required to continue the rigorous instruction for students with disabilities so that gap does not widen. So we continue the education for students with disabilities. And the Ohio Department of Education uses final data submitted through the Education Management Information System, which is called EMIS. The results of the four ratings are as follows. Meets requirements, that's the highest rating you can get in special education. Needs assistance, needs intervention, and needs substantial interventions. So as you can imagine, COVID was a huge instructional interruption for all kids. But it was even a bigger interruption for students with disabilities. We have students that are on the spectrum. We have students with multiple disabilities. We have students with specific learning disabilities. You name it. Um, I call our district the melting pot, um, because we include all kids, first of all, but we want to make sure that they're, um, fully educated. And so, our district, um, we met requirements for the state of Ohio, um, even through the pandemic. So, that's a huge win for our district. So, even due to COVID, um, the special education rating is based entirely on the compliance indicators. So, all the data was not rated, um, because some of the testing was not completed and that is statewide. However, there were some, um, indicators that we had to meet or didn't meet. And depending on the indicators that we did meet is tabulated by points. And so, that's how we got the meets requirements. Because we met, um, a lot of the indicators that were required by the Ohio Department of Education. And so, the data collection was for school year twenty eighteen nineteen and for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So, don't be startled looking at this graph, this is preschool. Um, so, we know preschool, they enter at three years old, some not knowing anything, not having any exposure, any social skills. Um, and so, they come in just not knowing anything. So, when you look at the indicators, six A and six B, um, preschool, the LRE means least restricted environment in the regular educational classroom program. So, that was met in the preschool LRE, which is the least restrictive envi- environment for a separate program, we met that. And so, indicator seven A is preschool social, emotional skills and growth. And then also in skills, we did not meet that indicator because they're still growing, they're still learning. These are three and four-year-old students. But we're, we're a five-star preschool, so keep that in mind. Um, so, some of the indicators that we did not meet, um, we did, um, have growth by the end of each year to continue to earn the five stars. Um, indicator seven B, acquisition of knowledge, growth and skills. So, the growth we met this year, um, for skills, we did not, again, gotta keep in mind COVID and keep in mind they're three-year-olds, three and four-year-olds. Um, indicator seven C for behaviors, growth and skills. For growth, we did not meet, for behaviors, but in skills, they're getting there. They're learning and they're picking up those skills. And early childhood transition from part C to part B, and what that is, that's child find. So, any student in our district that is suspected of having a learning disability, we have to find those kids. So, no matter what, we, if they're out there, we have to find them and there's a timeline. So, if we do not meet that timeline, we do not meet that indicator. So, we found all these little kiddos that needed services and we met that indicator. I can answer your questions at the end? Okay, thank you. Um, so, this is school age, our youth with disabilities prepare for life, work, and post-secondary education. And so, for graduation, um, we did not meet that indicator largely due to our students with disabilities have the right to continue their education until they're twenty-two. So, they would not graduate, a lot of our students would not graduate at the same pace as a typical student. So, therefore, their diplomas are deferred and they can continue their education until they're twenty-two. Um, dropout, we met, secondary transitions, we met, and post-school outcomes, we met that indicator also. Does the, um, district implement IDEA to improve services and results for children with disabilities? So, facilitated peer involvement, we met that indicator. Um, dispo- disproportionality, all categories, we met. Disproportionality, specific disabilities category, we met. Child find for, um, initial evaluations, we met. And then timely correction of non-compliance findings, we met that indicator as well. And so, now we're gonna talk about the, um, budget allocations. And this is this fiscal school year and last year's fiscal school year, these are just comparison and numbers. And then over time, the allocations from school year two thousand eight to current, you can see the allocations from fiscal year, um, two thousand eight all the way to two thousand twenty-two. So, the fiscal year twenty twenty-two IDEA budget by function, um, we have instruction that is over half of our budget. So, largely, the money that we receive goes to instruction. Um, teaching our kids, um, all the things that they need, all the skills that are required. Um, and as you can see, for support services at the bottom, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine. And for government and governance, I'm sorry, and administration, it's ninety thousand dollars. For non-public, forty-seven thousand plus. And then, um, indirect cost is seventeen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. So, by object, um, again, for salaries, again, well over half the budget to, uh, make sure that those, um, teachers and personnel are paid to ensure that the instruction is taking place. Um, purchase services, um, one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Um, and then retire fringe benefits, which goes along with salaries, is, um, a little over two hundred thousand dollars. And then the other, twenty-five thousand. And so, if you want to look at it by percentage, again, by function, the instruction is well over seventy percent of the budget. Support services is fourteen percent. Governance and administration, nine percent, and non-public is five percent. And by object, purchase services, nineteen percent. Retirement fringe, um, is twenty-one percent. And again, salaries, which goes hand in hand with the retirement fringe benefits, is fifty-eight percent. That concludes our report. I have to say, I'm very proud of the team, um, in the department because they worked very, very hard to get the meets requirements for the state, um, even through a tough, tough time with the pandemic. So, I really, really want to applaud not just, um, the department, but all teachers and the parents and, um, all the staff that really played an integral part to make sure that students receive the instruction that they deserved. Thank you. Sorry, did you have a question?
Thank you. Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
I know at age twenty-one, wouldn't they move to twenty-two? Because I take care of those with disability, he came from out healthy and he's still not there yet.
So, the age twenty-two is the first day of their birthday. So, they can, they can go to school all the way through age twenty-one and their last day technically is their twenty-second birthday. That's when the services for school age ends.
And I'm glad, Ms. Gray, you mentioned something about, so when you saw graduation, I know she was talking about preschool. People were wondering like, who preschool should we graduate? This is really for the students that with disabilities that transition all the way through. But I will tell you, and this is one of the things, it's a federal mandate, we're trying to get the feds to change it. Like that kid you're talking about, if we see that there's a young person that needs attention, more support, more education, we're going to keep them in school. But I'm gonna tell you, if they don't graduate in four years, the state actually looks at them as a problem. We get dangerous, we get a negative rating for that kid, holding that kid right. So, we know that happens, but we made a decision in Wynton Woods that we're going to do what's right for the children and not worry about what the state says with their, with their, with their rating system. We're not totally ignoring it, but we would be negligent putting a kid out ready for the world when I know you're not ready for the world. That, I think that's irresponsible. So, we have several kids that we encourage their parents, and Ms. Gray does an incredible job encouraging the parents. We don't think your child is ready. So, we're going to hold a diploma and give them additional services so they can be ready. Because one day, parents are not there, that child's gonna take care of himself. And we would be negligent, again, if we didn't do the parts that we need to do. So, when you look at the graduation number and it's like ninety-one percent or eighty-eight percent, you're saying, well, you had three hundred-plus graduates. Well, we had probably ten kids that didn't graduate because we were holding them back to give them more services.
Yes.
So, we wanted you guys to know about that.
I have one other question.
Yes.
Since they put him, well, do, do the school offer, because he stays with me now.
Mm-hmm.
Do the schools offer something after that that I can put him here? Because he can't, he can't even count and he's nineteen. And the school should have never, before he was awarded to the state and I got him, I didn't even know. So, I'm still finding stuff out and I didn't know, I don't know, can I re-enroll him in the program?
Mm-hmm.
Especially since he's only here in this district.
Yeah, and we can talk individually about that, um, there are special circumstances. Yeah, we can meet and talk and review all that information. You're welcome. The primary goal for students with disabilities is so that students can live independent from their families. So, as a parent, you, you know, you want to see your child go off and in the world and not have to worry. Um, and so, some of these kiddos, um, sometimes it may not happen, they may need more guidance. Um, and sometimes it does. And so, and that's why they need to be in school for, um, until they're twenty-two so that they can learn those skills, build those skills, and be able to, um, function in society after they leave our four walls. Yes.
So, this is completely new to me.
Mm-hmm.
I'm confused on, you know, how that's even possible. So, my question is, where's the parental accountability at?
Well, see, in my case, they, these are students that have disabilities, probably have been awarded to the state.
Right.
And what happens there with programs is they hire people like me that have, that have worked in the facility to do that. And what happens is you take over because they moved here.
Right.
And now that I'm finding this out because I have a right now through the state, I need to make sure you take care of it.
Let me caution you, let me caution you about something, and this is where we have to be very careful. We have to protect our district and we have to protect the integrity of the district. There are some districts that have said, we're going to graduate you on anyway. And what they've done now, they've said, okay, instead of us graduating you on, why don't you go to Wynton Woods because they can give you some more time? Because they don't get the date. They, they just send them on to us. And we have to be very careful about protecting our kids and our graduation. We're saying, if you are a kid, we're going to keep you. But just transitioning people in at the last minute is really disrespectful to our system because we don't really even know the child.
Exactly.
I just have two quick questions. One, I'm on my second child through the preschool with an IEP and I do have to say, the preschool IEP program has been amazing to me. But my concern is, what if you had children that move into the district or have been in the district and they didn't go through preschool IEP? I got those services through children.
Okay.
They said, please contact Wynton Woods, please contact Help Me Grow, Help Me Grow, help me get both of my children in here. But my thing is, for disabilities that aren't considered like physical disabilities, why are, why are we pulling, pushing kids through grades K through, K through tenth, eleventh, and then going, we're gonna hold you off at twelve? Why are we not, and I understand we take a ding, but if there's a child who's not ready to go from fourth to fifth grade or fifth to sixth grade, why are we pushing them through when their disability may not be physical? Or maybe a hard one, ADHD is hard, ADD is hard, that's really hard to get diagnosed by it. You probably know.
Well, I think the thing that you have to remember is there's a self-esteem process that goes along. So, when you start holding kids back in those lower grades, you really overwhelm them. You're overwhelming to the fact that they decide that I am going to be a dropout. I am not, once I get to age, I'm not gonna stay in your program. So, we have to be very careful of how we hold kids back. And then the other thing that we have to be very careful about is the athletic component. There's an athletic piece here that people need to be aware of. There are some parents that have said to us, hold my kid back. And we're like, no, your kid is ready to go. No, hold my kid back because now I want him to be a bigger, stronger athlete and be able to out compete with other kids. So, we're like, no, we're not holding your kid back, your kid has the right brains. You would be amazed at how this happens across the board.
No, I get that, but I'm just saying, like, I just, I guess, I mean, I graduated from Wynton Woods, but over fifteen years ago. But back then, it wasn't really that taboo, I had a bunch of children, a bunch of children, sorry, a bunch of classmates that did get held back in the earlier grades, but it made them a better person, now they have degrees and stuff. And I get where you're coming from, I'm not gonna hold you back if you don't have an issue. But if they're clearly not being able to get the services that they get, I just feel like I get the twelfth grade part of it. And it is a sixty percent parent, forty percent of school, I, I am wholeheartedly that. But if a parent's telling you, my kids are failing and we've done A, B, and C, and you've done A, B, and C, then why are we not? I get the self-esteem, but if a parent is gonna sit their kid down and say, listen, we need an extra third grade.
And we do that.
Okay.
And we do that. So, we don't just send you on just to send you on.
Okay.
We actually have some kids crying on the sideline saying, I'm, I don't wanna go.
Right.
You have other kids saying, I wanna go.
Right.
Uh, we have parents who, when we talked about the summer program, we use that summer program to give you a little bit more because we're like, you're ready, but remember, we give it to you with support. So, giving you another chance to transition when we know that you barely made it out of fifth grade. Sixth grade, you're gonna stumble, so we might as well give you some support in sixth grade too. We try to put a safety net for every child who may need the services, okay? So, that's a great question, so, thank you. All right, Ms. Bray?
Are there any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment.
Yes.
About how, this is right, this is Dr. Right, thank you so much. My daughter participated in the volleyball and cheerleading over the summer. And I know this is like a small, but it was huge for me as a parent because I work.
Mm-hmm.
By her being twelve, daycare really wasn't something she was interested in.
Right.
So, I know there are some things that I know that the school district could be diff, was trying to be different, it can be different. I would like to say that the school district got that right, that was awesome this summer and I want to say I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I'm excited about the new programs that are coming about and enriching and things like that. So, definitely continue to build upon that because as a parent and a taxpayer, that was truly beneficial.
Yeah.
And I can see it made a big difference in my daughter, she made friends.
That's good. Because that was, that was the reason, it really wasn't trying to get her to be a, a cheerleader or a volleyball player. It was really giving her a chance to be acclimated with her peers. She's missed being with her friends for almost a whole year. So, we did it as a rebonding with kids because if the kids don't get a chance to bond, then you know they struck.
Yeah.
So, we did it, it, it was costly, but it was worth it.
Right.
And we wanted more parents to participate with it because the kids who went through it actually had a better opportunity. And you know what, when people talk about coming to board meetings, unless you came into this meeting, you probably wouldn't hear all the integral parts of it. So, I'm glad you guys did come tonight because there are some very serious pieces to our, to our madness that goes untapped because people assume that we're not doing the right things. But we put a lot of effort into trying to do what's best for children. And this is an opportunity, and guess what? To the people who, who say, I'm a taxpayer, I love you for it, but it didn't cost you any more money.
It possibly not.
It cost you nothing.
Not only that, Mr. Smith, but also to, the other caveat is, it allowed me as a parent to develop some relationships with other parents.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so, I am appreciative to that because I would not have been able to develop these relationships with these other parents.
Mm-hmm.
My daughter now has friends, we're getting together with the kids.
Right.
We created a network.
Right.
Based on the services that were provided by the students.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for that.
And the enrichment was twofold with the social, um, emotional part due to the pandemic. A lot of those kids felt isolated and did not have that social interaction. So, like I said, it was two-part with the social, emotional, and then also the enrichment with the educational instructional piece. And the students with disabilities were a part of that as well. So, yeah, it was all around a, a major success.
Uh, my student is an open enrollment student, so.
They are, they are not?
Yes, currently, um, this is his first year of Wynton Woods. He came from out healthy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but if the summer program is offered again next year, will he be eligible to participate if he is enrolled again for next year?
Okay, here's the deal. If he is our student, he has the opportunity, we just cannot provide transportation. That's the only piece.
He walks down from down the street.
He gets the lunch, he gets the services, he gets everything that every other child gets because, Mom, you live gets because, Mom, you live where you live. But if this is a unique program that you like project-based learning, we want him to be able to take advantage of it no matter where you live. So, yes, absolutely, yes. Okay.
One thing, will there be better communication about the summer program? Because I heard nothing about it at all.
Can I tell you, we sent out all kinds of information on the summer program.
I didn't hear anything about it. I didn't hear anything. Are you connected?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, they send certain emails I get, but I don't get all the emails. Like, I don't get all the emails.
So, this year, this year, I've decided, the boards asked me to get in a hot air balloon and travel all around, drop flyers. Okay.
So, on an annual basis, our district families are emailed and give or mailed, if you don't have email files, addresses on file, to please do an annual verification of our system. And that's how you get added to our communication lists.
Yeah, and I have, but I've missed multiple things. So, I don't know where the, the thing is. I don't know where the lag is.
Okay.
But maybe speak, look at that.
We would definitely.
You know?
Yes, sir.
I have a suggestion. Like you said, I, I did the verification this year. Um, I have multiple emails and man is attached to my phone. One way that I would say, um, communicate all information is through social media. There's not a parent in Forest Park that's not connected. If they're not connected, their grown-up child is or a teenager is, and posting on the Wynton Woods Facebook page will get out to the community. Uh, there's Facebook Forest Park Blues, which a lot of the parents are in. And if, if I see something on the Wynton Woods page, I share it on my personal page that, uh, has a access to thousands of people in my network. So, um, just sharing all information on Wynton Woods Facebook page would, is another avenue of communicating with those that might not check email or uh, just abandon their nerves with.
And with all due, um, with all due respect, when Dr. Johnson said that the board meetings are on the website, I think I spoke to you about this on Tuesday. Not everybody knows how to navigate the website. Not everybody has time to do that. Board meetings are not on social media. I checked. Like, even the update of the board meeting was not on the Facebook page.
Great.
Okay, as a point of order, we need to get back to our board meeting. Um, we appreciate your comments and your suggestions. What I would like to say is, we do have a student achievement committee that, um, you know, we welcome parents to come and, uh, join us for the student achievement committees and that you would get on that mailing list and they would tell you when the meetings are going to occur. Um, uh, we appreciate the suggestions with respect to the Facebook. Some people do social media more than others. So, um, that's a good suggestion. And our communications person will take that under consideration. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam President. So, I'm ready to move on to ten point zero seven. These are all first reads. So, every, okay, I'll wait. Uh, the, we have hundreds of policies. And the board has to review policies to make sure they are up to date. So, the policies board that you're reviewing, uh, these are all first reads that will come back next month, is the prohibition against disabilities discrimination of employment, uh, prohibition against disabilities discrimination of employment for, uh, administration, professional staff, and classified staff. Non-discrimination, which is policy one four two two, discrimination, non-discrimination and equal employment opportunity. Uh, thirty-one twenty-two, non-discrimination of equal employment opportunity for professional staff. Classified staff is policy forty-one twenty-two of the same character, non-discrimination and equal employment opportunity. And then twenty-two forty is program controversial issues. Eighty-five hundred operations, which is food service, and eighty-five ten operations is wellness. So, board, these are all first reads to be ready to be discussed and voted on for the next board meeting in September. Doc, if you're ready, I can move on to ten point zero eight, which is a facilities update uh, from the, uh, business manager, Steve Denny.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I would just wanted to remind, uh, our board that there are a total of nine replacement and revised policies that we should look over and, as Mr. Smith has said, be prepared to vote on at the next board meeting. And yes, the next point of, um, uh, item up for, uh, is ten point oh eight, which is the facilities update, which is Mr. Denny, our executive director of business affairs. You have the floor.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, everyone. So, I get the opportunity and pleasure of reviewing a little bit about our facilities, uh, our, reimagining of how we teach and learn in our district. And you can see, we're actually having this meeting, of course, in one of our new buildings, the north campus. Uh, south campus came online also, uh, effective the first day of school this year, August twenty-third. So, we have, uh, uh, all students and teachers in, and kids are learning and growing now. So, it's, it's just fantastic to see that, um, as this process that has spanned about ten years is sort of coming to fruition. So, one of the things Mr. Smith asked me to share is not only what's happening right now, but also just a glimpse of what's still coming. Um, and one of the things that's happening now, and you all have probably seen it and experienced it, is the construction is finalizing. So, the buildings are done, but the site work is still being finalized. Um, so, we are looking at probably, I believe it's a final one-hundred percent completion date of October fourth or fifth for the south campus, where all the site work will be complete, the grading will be done, the seed and straw will be in, and everything will be, um, uh, complete. We're also looking at adding more parking spaces at that site because we think that'll help facilitate with some of the pickup-drop-off dynamics that we're currently seeing. And then the north campus final completion date is, is November fifth. So, we're actually approaching that as well. Um, the site is sort of broken into two halves here. There's the, uh, east side, which is the, the Wynton Road side. That side is further along than the west side, which is sort of the Warrior Way side or the old entry drive side. Uh, they're still doing earthwork over there and they're putting in a middle school parking lot. That's fifty-six spaces. And then a bus loop for the buses to pull in and out, uh, that is, also has an additional thirty-five spaces for during the day and, and an extra thirty-six spaces for night. Uh, nighttime operations like concerts and basketball games and ex, extra events, teacher conferences, things of that nature. Um, on this side, we have a hundred and twenty-five spots that actually just got top coated this weekend. So, that asphalt is done. We're still waiting to get the striping crew in to go ahead and stripe everything. And then this, what we call the student lot, which is fifty-six more spaces down by the stadium, is also going to be top coated, I believe, tomorrow and hopefully striped. So, our goal is to get it all done for our first home game against Kings, uh, this Friday. Uh, so, we're excited about that. Um, what's coming? So, that's what's happening now. What's coming is, uh, is more, more beautification of the site. Uh, one of the things we've done is really tried to protect the budget as we've gone along. So, if we ran into any mishaps, we wanted to have enough contingency on hand to make sure we corrected that. All the construction you're seeing was funded from the passage, uh, uh, of the twenty sixteen bond issue from the community. And then the state kicked in half. So, it's fifty percent local, forty, well, fifty-one percent local and forty-nine percent state share. So, all of that, um, we wanted to make sure we protected that closely and kept it, uh, you know, basically in reserve until we could clear all those hurdles. Well, we're getting there. And we're hopeful to be able to spend some more on beautification of the site, landscaping, things of that nature. So, Mr. Smith said, hey, why don't you show them the, these couple of these renderings, these videos? So, you'll see sort of a base GMP or base guaranteed maximum price, what the base contract was. And then you'll see what the landscaping could look like, what we're going to endeavor to achieve. And I will caution between the two videos, uh, the trees are way too big. Uh, but it's just a function of the computer graphics. So, just kind of miniaturize the trees a little bit in your mind and it'll hopefully capture what we're trying to achieve later. Our whole goal was to create this, um, like college quad type feel for the kids. That was, the kids told us they wanted that in the visioning sessions and then the, uh, engagement we did with the, the students. We had a facilities and, uh, student facilities team that was grades five through twelve that gave us some, some really good advice. They're our number one client. So, without any further ado, we'll watch the first video. Just a few, first, just the first few seconds. So, this is panning, looking north. And you can kind of see basically just green. That's grass. This is the sidewalk that's currently there. This is the high school main entry. And then over to the other side is the middle school main entry. And it will pan a little bit, but then the video just does a architectural fly-through through the building to sort of give the rendering. This is produced, this was produced three years ago, by the way, four years ago. As you can see, a look down the front of the building toward the middle school side. It's, it's a pretty good rendering. It looks pretty good. Uh, okay, you can stop that. And then we'll go ahead and take a look at the upgraded with all the alternates. If we can purchase everything we would like to purchase, again, guarding those funds, being, being, uh, judicious. Again, the trees are a little too mature. But go ahead and we'll play that. And you can kind of see what the enhanced landscaping package could look like. The other thing you'll note, you can see them building that out there, is an amphitheater. Can seat up, up to about a hundred, depending on the age of the student. Um, so, the idea was to be able to hold college, or, excuse me, collegiate-type feel like concerts outside, jazz band concert or choir event or something of that nature, movie night, maybe. Different options for the community to really bring people together. And again, you can see it fly around this way. Sorry. Yeah. We're pretty excited about this. Uh, and that will be hopefully finishing up in the next month or so, that amphitheater. And then one more nice feature is, and it's sort of a vision that we really wanted to see for the students, is you can process out that door, door one, walk straight down, and it lines up exactly with the front gate of the stadium. So, again, that collegiate-type feel of the band comes out, it's a game night, and they process right into the field. So, I think we got some real opportunities for, um, building spirit and building community engagement. And I just wanted to share that with you tonight. So, Mr. Smith, thanks for the opportunity. Any questions or anything from, uh, Dr. Johnson or Mr. Smith? Board?
No, I don't have any comments. I just want to say thank you. And it's really exciting uh, to see the new year start with two new facilities. It really is exciting. And I think that if not anything, like you say, it was the two thousand and sixteen, uh, bond monies that paid for this. And so, it's, yes, it's more money, but you see where your money is going. I mean, I think it's one thing when you're paying more taxes and you see nothing. But we have two brand-new facilities, and, uh, I appreciate the work that you and the team, uh, did to make that happen. And stay on track with the budget. I mean, that wasn't an easy thing to do. I mean, you gave us updates, you know, all along, and we were right on track, and I appreciate that.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Gray?
Is that why, okay, so now it makes sense. And I think this is what people was complaining about, why didn't face the street? And now I see you sitting, building a theater, and it faces this way. Okay.
Yeah. That's a big part of it.
No one understood that. I will communicate because now it's facing the field.
That's right.
I agree.
Yeah.
Everybody wants, I'm like, yeah, why didn't it face the street? Now it makes sense.
Yeah, we wanted to create that, really like a college quad. It was sort of the idea.
No one communicated that that way, but now I agree.
Yeah. Appreciate that. Thank you.
So, Mr. Ray, so here, right here, um, when the band comes out the first time, you see me leading the band.
I'm going to be right there.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Doc, are you ready to move forward?
Yes, we're ready to move on to, uh, the next item on the agenda, which is personnel schedules.
Thank you.
Um, should we, uh, move back to this, uh, room? Or are you going to stand there?
We're going to stay here.
Okay, that's fine. So, uh, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's, um, personnel schedules. Mr. Smith, if you want to, uh, you have the floor.
Yes, Ms. Wilson.
Yeah, Mr. McGowan will need your vote.
Review personnel schedules, Dr. Johnson.
Yes, it's personnel schedules A, B, C, D, and E.
Well, uh, so, members of the board, we respectfully ask that you approve, um, the personnel schedules as presented. Schedule A, resignations. Schedule B, certificated staff. Schedule C, support staff. Schedule D, supplementals. And Schedule E, leaves.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Um, board, a, uh, motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Um, are there any questions for discussion with regards to the personnel schedules A, B, C, D, or E? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh two, which is the Wynton Woods Teachers Association Contract. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor. Or Mrs. Wilson?
Yeah, Mrs. Wilson will do the teacher contract and also.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, members of the board, we respectfully ask that you approve the Wynton Woods Teachers Association Contract, uh, for seven one twenty-one to six thirty twenty-two as approved. I mean, as presented, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Uh, board, a motion would be in order to approve this Wynton Woods Teachers Association Contract for seven one twenty-one through six thirty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wynton Woods Teachers Association Contract for the year beginning July first, twenty twenty-one, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Uh, the only thing I would like to just say that I appreciate the work and the effort that Mrs. Wilson and Mr. Seymour, along with the Wynton Woods Teachers Association, uh, that they came to some agreement, you know, uh, that was amiable. And, uh, so, I just appreciate the work because I know that it's, it's hard work. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
If there are no other, uh, questions for discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. And the next item on the agenda is eleven point oh three, which is the Ohio Association of Public School Employees OPCE Contract. Uh, Mrs. Wilson, you can continue.
Okay. Uh, members of the board, we respectfully request that you approve the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, also known as OPCE, contract for seven one twenty-one to six thirty twenty-two as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Uh, board, a motion will be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Ohio Association of Public School Employees OPCE Contract for seven one twenty-one to six thirty twenty-two as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? And I could just reiterate the same thing, you know, that we appreciate your work, uh, and working with the, um, the unions and making this, uh, come to, uh, fruition. Um, if there are no other questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh four, which is, uh, the resolution to approve the payment of a stipend to district staff. Superintendent Smith, Mrs. Wilson, you have the floor back.
Okay. Uh, members of the board, uh, we respectfully request that you approve the resolution to approve the payment of a stipend to district staff due to disruption and extra work required to maintain operations during the COVID-nineteen pandemic as recommended.
Okay, um, thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Um, board, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution to approve the payment of a stipend to district staff due to disruptions and extra work required to maintain operations during the COVID-nineteen pandemic as rec, as recommended.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or for discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh five, which is the supplemental salary schedule effective eight one twenty twenty-one. Is that, Mrs. Wilson, as well?
This is the last one for me.
You can continue.
I'm going to pass the mic.
Okay.
Uh, members of the board, in front of you, you'll find a, uh, modified supplemental s, uh, salary schedule. Uh, Mr. Seymour and I worked with the athletic director and also the, uh, fine arts facilitator as required by the contract to make adjustments to the salary schedule, which were unanimously, um, agreed to. So, we are asking that the board approve the supplemental salary schedule effective eight one twenty-one, um, as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Board, there is a list of all of the groups that, um, Mrs. Wilson is referring to in our board docs. Um, a motion will be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the supplemental salary schedule effective eight one twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
Yeah, just one, one real quick one, Mrs. Wilson. There, there's two pages on board docs, and the second page is blank. First page ends with group eight. That's, that is the end of it, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Good observation, yeah.
I just want to make sure there wasn't anything missing.
Yes, good observation. All right. Are there any other, um, questions or discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next. The next item on the agenda is 11.06, which is the list of schools declared impractical to provide transportation during the 2021-2022 school year. Superintendent Smith or Mr. Denny, whichever one of you can have the floor. Thank you.
Good evening again, board, and thank you. You should have before you a listing of the schools that were declared impractical for transportation due to still being inside the 30-minute drive radius, but a very small number of students attend them. And so the necessity of scheduling and assigning a bus to actually provide that transport would be economically irresponsible, essentially. So I think there's only one new addition to the list as opposed to last year. Questions, comments?
Board, a motion would be in order, and then we could ask any questions that we might have.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of schools declared impractical to provide transportation during the 2021-2022 school year as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Do you have any questions for Mr. Denny regarding this list? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 11.07, which is the bus stops during the 2021-2022 school year. Mr. Denny?
Thank you again, Dr. Johnson. Again, you should have before you the list of bus stops for the 2021-2022 school year, very consistent with prior years, except for the changing in school names with taking off some certain schools, like the intermediate school is now closed, Primary South Elementary School. Those schools are largely not used as bus stops or transfer points any longer. So with those few modifications, the list of stops is essentially the same as prior years.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Denny. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bus stops for the 2021-2022 school year as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. I do have a question with regards to the bus stops. I see that some of them say all stop to stop classification, and then some of them say curb to curb. Can you explain to us exactly what that means?
Yeah, curb to curb is fairly rare. It has to do with when there's a direct transport. All stops means it works for every bus. You know, every bus that goes by there, it's a stop that it could stop at, whereas a curb to curb is a more specialized assigned spot that it might be just that bus tier. We run five bus tiers, middle school, high school, two south campus tiers, and an early childhood center tier. So that's a more, more specific stop just for a certain reason. Sometimes it might be a child with a disability where you're loading a wheelchair. That's another example of when those might come up. All stop is sort of the universal. It's, any student can be assigned to that stop. Any bus can stop at that stop. It's straight out of VersaTrans, the routing software. So thank you for the question.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the response. All right, anybody else have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 11.08, which is a group of policies for second read, reissued, replaced, and revised policies. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Dr. Johnson and board. There are nine policies that were brought to your attention last month, and so the recommendations to approve the second read, reissue, replacement, and revise board policies as presented. Number one, 2370 blended learning. Number two, 1662 administration anti-harassment. Policy 2260 non-discrimination and access to equal educational opportunities. Policy 3362 professional staff anti-harassment. Policy 4362 anti-harassment for classified staff. Policy 5517 students and anti-harassment. Policy 2260.01, Section 504 ADA prohibition against discrimination based on disability. Policy 2266 non-discrimination on the basis of sex in the district programs or activities. And policy finally, 5336 students, care of students with diabetes.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the second read, reissued, replacement, and revised board policies as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you for the motion and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? I just want to say it could be noted that these are policies that come up through Neola, so these aren't just off the top of our head, things that we're just coming up with. So these are policies that all school boards are governed by. So having said that, if there are no other questions for discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Smith. The next item on the agenda is 12.01, which is the Board of Education reports and the legislative report. Mr. Smith, can you give us any updates that you might have for the legislative reports?
Yes, the, there's some controversy still in the House. They're debating about requiring a vaccine for all students and all staff, and that has a lot of controversy, and it's across districts all over the state. So you will hear more about that within the upcoming weeks. The superintendents, well, not the superintendents, the CDC is trying to get the governor to make that a mandate, and the governor is saying it's up to the individual. So stay tuned.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We appreciate your leadership and guidance in keeping us up to date on what's going on with the legislative report, and we greatly value what you bring to us. The next item on the agenda is 12.02, which is our Great Oaks Career Technology Center Report. And Mr. Birdy, do you have any information to share with us?
I did send everybody an email, which included the, the normal documents that I try to share with everybody, which was Mr. Snyder's report to the board. He's the CEO of Great Oaks. Just a board highlights document, some legislative reports, a diversity and unity report, and then a spotlight on student report, which really didn't have a whole lot of students in it since they just started school, and there were no Witten Woods students in there. So with that, I'll conclude my Great Oaks report.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. We do appreciate you serving on that board for us. The next item on the agenda is 1301, which is board motions, recommendations. I'm not aware of any board motions that aren't already on the agenda. Board, any, okay, all right. Seeing none, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 1401, which is comments from the Board of Education Superintendent and Treasurer. Let's see, Mr. McGowan, can we start with you? Or you have anything you'd like to add?
No, absolutely. As a sports guy, I'm gonna use a sports analogy, and they always say, if you go to a game and you don't see the umpire, or you don't see the referee, then that's a good game because you don't see them getting in the middle of anything. And the reason I bring that up is that if we don't have people come into meetings like this, we don't know if we're doing a good job. This board works extremely hard trying to make sure we always do the right things. And it's unfortunate that the only time we see a full house is when there's an issue. And I promise you, we hear everything that you say. We absolutely do. But I put it on you guys to make sure you attend. I know we've heard everything about getting it more on social media. Absolutely. We will do whatever we need to do to make sure everybody knows when we have meetings. I wanted to recognize three ladies. Those ladies right there in the back row, the administrators. As the newest person, I've probably been to, I don't know, 30, 40 meetings, and every meeting, they're there. Every meeting, those ladies are there contributing, and it does not go unnoticed. Same way with the tech staff, tech staff. Mrs. Hobbs, I mean, same way with Mr. and Mrs. Denny. Every meeting I go to, those ladies and gentlemen are always there. And it, it, it doesn't hurt me, and it doesn't upset me, but probably for the majority of the meetings, there's nobody here but us. We go through all of this stuff, and we have our, you know, our talks and things, and, you know, hopefully people are looking at it on TV, but for the most part, it's just us. It's just us. And, I mean, we need to know what you guys need from us. So, I mean, I behoove you to keep coming to these meetings. We definitely want you to. You talk about communication. Communication can always be better. We hear the complaints, we hear the feelings, especially about the bus situation. And I promise you, I promise you, we will fix it. It will get taken care of. I'm sorry, let me get off my soapbox.
No, we appreciate that. I appreciate the comments. No. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
You're good? Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Birdy?
Just to piggyback on that, to what Mr. McGowan said, you know, thank you to the parents and the community members that took time out of their night to come here and share the information that they, they shared with us. You know, it's one of those things, you, you want everything to be great and everybody to be happy, but that's not the way things actually happen, and the way we deal with things is knowing what's out there and what's going on. So again, thank you all for, for bringing that information to us. We do, as Mr. McGowan said, we do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. Mr. Seymour? Do you have anything? No? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, finally, Dr. Johnson, to everybody that came to the meeting, we appreciate you. This is usually not the setup. We were, according to the information that we heard, there were going to be 3,000 residents coming, so we were trying to accommodate you by having all of this space and move through. So I know there are some people still standing outside doing it from a live simulcast, but we, we really appreciate you guys. And, and here's the thing, when someone made reference to we don't want people to come, we actually bring kids here and give them awards for art and for academics, and we're hoping that when you come, you keep coming. It's really a trick to kind of get you here, and then we want you to keep coming and supporting your kids and other kids in the district. So you, we want you to come and hear all the exciting things that's happening in the district, and if you have complaints, bring the complaints. We handle them, and we don't shy away from them because we want to be a great community, and we want to be a great school district and order to partner together. So to the people that are still standing outside, they couldn't get in, it was standing room only, and we appreciate you guys a ton. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And, you know, I, I really, we can't say it enough, we, welcome back to a new school year. I'm a teacher myself, and I've been teaching for 30 years, well, more than 30, but 30 at one place. But anyway, it doesn't matter. Every year I get this excitement like a little kid. I can't sleep at night, you know? I'm just so excited, you know? I want to buy new school supplies. I mean, that's when you know you love what you do. And, and I've always said, when I get to that point where I don't love it anymore, then I'm leaving. I gotta get out of it. But I am so excited every year. I'm kind of a little melancholy at the end of the year, but I'm looking forward to the time off. But we do welcome you to this new school year, and I know Mr. Smith always needs to hear one quote that my mother would say, but she said motivation is the breakfast of champions. And we appreciate the people who come, the staff, the administrators, the teachers, all of the stakeholders, our volunteers, the people who, you know, run the various organizations that pour into our students within this district. We appreciate that. And the only way we know is if somebody comes back and tells us, but if it's all word on the street, we can't really do anything about that. You know, we can't do anything about anonymous something or other. That might just be someone with an axe to grind. We need to see your face, we need to hear you, you know, say it. Having said that, there's a few things that I want to call your attention to, because somebody said they don't check the calendar that's on the website, and sometimes the calendar's not always right. But there is a school calendar with the various open house dates and times that are listed for your students. Check their backpack, it should be there. We should have a One Call that'll go out about that. Also, I want to just say thank you to the Warrior Pantry. The Warrior Pantry has been outstanding. They've been hitting a home run as far as I'm concerned, they and their special teams. They alert the community through the One Call and through the website. So keep, keep up to date on, on that to see if you are in need, or if you know someone else is in need. Again, we've all talked about it, he's a football fan, there's football fans, we're sports fans, it's sports season. Hey, how about showing up in the, in the team colors? You go to some schools and you see it's nothing but a sea of purple, nothing but a sea of red. How much more encouraging would it be for our players to see a sea of blue and green? Whether it's sportswear, or whether it's just a green sweatshirt, or a blue sweatshirt, if you're coming to the games, whether it's football, or whether it's, you know, basketball, or whatever it is that you're, where are colors so that the people who come from the other side know we have school spirit? We, we love our, we love our school, and we love our kids. So just to say that, another thing is the ACT testing is coming up. It's supposed to be this, coming up Saturday, September the 11th. If you have any students who want to take this ACT early, just to see how they're going to do, so they can take it again later, then you want to try to get them in there. Also, picture day is coming up, so parents check those backpacks and get the date for your student to take their picture. We have something that we started since I've been on this board, and it didn't happen before Mr. Smith came along called credit checks. You know how some people have good credit, and some people have bad credit? Some of our students got good credits, and some of them have not so good credits. So we've been starting, since Mr. Smith has been on the board, and he and I talked about this when I first came on the board, we do credit checks. So credit checks is where they check your student's record to see what credits they have at the end of the eighth grade, at the end of the ninth grade, at the end of the 10th grade. It's no, it should come as no surprise, because when I first got on the board, there's parents like, I want my student to graduate, but they didn't have enough credit. There was no credit checking going on. We do a formal credit check for every student individually. So we want you to make sure that you participate and get that information, because it shouldn't come to you as a surprise that your student needs to go to summer school in between the ninth and the 10th grade, or the 10th and 11th grade, okay, to recover some credits. The other thing is there's a parents' senior night that's going to be coming up, another very important feature for our seniors. It's college information. It checks college and career readiness. But also, if you're planning on them going to college, it gives them that information about the FAFSA, gives them the information about college opportunities, different colleges, and what they have available. And it's amazing how many students who are able to do that CCP, the College Credit Plus. So that helps out. We had, what do we have, five this past year that graduated with CCP for our? I think it, we had three, three, but then we had other ones that had credits, but they didn't have enough to get the whole degree. Also, in September is report card distribution, and there's homecoming coming up in September. We'll see how that goes with respect to what the CDC says, whether we'll be able to pull off another homecoming dance the way we did before. But, and the final thing that I want to say that, you know, I, I've been on the board, this is my second round, but I just, I'm just gonna say, the Board of Education, the Superintendent, the Treasurer, we all work together, along with the administrators and the staff, to benefit the students of this district. And I've always said this, that iron sharpens iron, and when we strive to be better than we currently are, then everything around us becomes better. I believe that. I really do believe that. So we appreciate your input and, you know, welcome you to come back to our board meetings. And with that said, are all minds clear? Okay? If all minds are clear, again, I want to thank the Waycross Community Crew for videotaping us tonight, and I know this was a little bit different setup, but we appreciate you for taking care of us tonight, Tony. And with that said, I'll call the Witten Woods City School Board of Education Regular Meeting on Monday, August the 30th. Adjourned. Thank you. Take care of yourself and your loved ones. Stay safe and be healthy.